First item on the agenda is consider approval of the minutes as presented, May 2nd, 2024 council meeting minutes, and then the May 15th, 2024 special call meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
It was.
I was like, I heard too.
Just put Sam, because Sam.
Sam.
Don't matter. Any discussion?
I bet you beat me a little bit anyway.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is consideration of non-emergency invoices over $10,000. Scott's going to speak on that, I think he's given you some reports on that.
Okay, and I got this in my committee report as well, parking report. And in your packet, you have a printout. It's got yellow on it, looks like this. It'll be behind that sign. Everybody got it? Okay, I think there's been a little ambiguity about what council wants to see or needs to see, and I need you to tell me exactly what you want, because we have some flexibility with some new, well, it's not new, it came out in 2022. But this is a report that can come off of our system, the old system, but I just kind of wanted to go over these and you give me some guidance, because we may desire to change our purchasing policy and ordinance we have on this. The bottom line of it is, if we, any invoice over $10,000, if we wait till the council approves them, we're either going to be late, okay, and we'll be charged some penalties, or the vendors are not going to do the continuing work, it's on the contract. Most everything we have that hits $10,000 or more, you have approved, not only in the budget ordinance, but you have also approved in a vote here in a council meeting. What the council is supposed to do, you have a fiduciary responsibility to check the finances, and I want to encourage you to do that, that's why I go to Greg Lewis to give you the reports you have. But I just want to kind of go through this report with you to see, so you can kind of see what I'm talking about when we come to my report, and then we can discuss further. Like TDS, that's a sanitation, every month, that'll be over $10,000. And if we don't pay it, we'll pick up the garbage, okay? So.
I'm going anyway.
Yep. That's another issue. It'd be a fine time for somebody to go into competition on that. The second page, sanitation fund, okay, that deals with the same thing, we move that money every month internally from the water sewer fund where we collect the money, and it goes, we have to move it to the sanitation fund, and that's over $10,000. Okay? Page three, Division of State Local Finance, that's our state revolving fund loans, we pay that every month, okay, and it's over $10,000. Page four, which the mayor will speak to this a little bit more, but this was an example of emergency purchase. We would still be under tree limbs and trees had we not moved ahead a few months to purchase this particular piece of equipment. We have submitted it to FEMA, but Mayor and I discussed it, and we agreed that he should call each of you and talk to you about that for transparency purposes, so that you at least knew it, but that was an emergency purchase, okay? Page five, health insurance fund, we will do that every month, that's to pay the employees' health insurance, it's over $10,000, okay? Number six, this is a good example, this is the third payment to the concrete gentleman who are doing the pickleball and the basketball courts, and if you haven't looked thus far, we're really going to be proud of that, a whole community is going to be proud of it. If I was a teenager or a kid going to get to play on that basketball field or court, it'd be a fine thing, I wish it was here when I was a kid, okay? But the concrete gentleman, that's an example of, you approved the contract that we bid out, okay, and it was in four different installments, we've paid the last one, but that is a payment that was made, okay? Our purchasing policy, which I wrote, and our ordinance, which I wrote, has a little bit of ambiguity in it, and I will clarify that in just a little bit at my report time. But that's an example, okay? Come to the next page, the materials for the waterline replacement on Hull Avenue for $21,000, that would be an example of one that, in my mind, you would say, yeah, we approved that to happen, okay? In this case, it's already been purchased, but if you were to reject waterlines, it's technically been approved in the budget ordinance, okay? To the tune of a couple of million dollars, but. The next one, page eight. Reno Assist Corporation, $41,690, okay, once again, was approved by this council for the total amount for the redo of the pool, this was the next to last payment, I think we opened more, no, this is the last payment, and it's done, and all is right with the word, because the swimming pool opens Saturday.
We finished the $7,000 payment, was the last payment, the 10%.
Yes, that's right, that's correct, the $7,590 payment that we have just paid this week, but that would be an example, once again, you've seen this, you've already approved that expenditure, but if we want to take out all ambiguity every month, you know, I can bring you this, and we would be late on that particular payment, okay? Page nine, Division of State Local Finance, once again, it's posted, you'll notice 6-3, but it's come out, we posted it as payable in this one in May, okay, once again, it comes up every month. Page 10, same thing, sanitation fund, and page 11, same thing for TDS, so we discussed this during my report a little bit, I want some full clarification, so I'm doing exactly what you want me to do, because I think we can do something a little different and make it easier on the hall, but it's totally up to you. So there's nothing that ever gets paid that the council hasn't already approved, either through the ordinance, or through a vote, or it's an emergency purchase. However, if you want to drill down on every check that goes through, I can give you every check that's been paid for the month, can have copies of the council checks if you desire them, okay? I do want to reiterate, you have a fiduciary responsibility to pay attention to the finances, okay? And that's why we give you all the forgiveness. That's all I got on that particular one.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is citizens' concerns, we have one person that wants to speak, and that's Councilman Canapple.
Is it here? Thank you, since this isn't actually a vote item, I did want to talk about it with citizens' concerns, because I'm a citizen, and I just want us to be reminded that we have a responsibility, anyone that's speaking in this room, whether council or citizens, that we have a responsibility to do the best that we can, and that includes just being civil in the meeting, being respectful in the meeting, because we're going to disagree, but the key is to focus on the strengths and weaknesses of the proposed solutions to community problems, not to engage in personal attacks against those who favor different solutions, we're going to disagree, I teach that in social skills with kids all the time. An even more powerful leadership strategy is listen for the concerns and values that underline, that underlie people's, we have diverse perspectives, we're going to see things differently, and then try to identify the points that we can agree on and find common ground. I think that's, finding common ground is really a life goal that I have, because we have so much difference and disagreement in our world today, so we need to be able to embrace diverse points of view, again, respectfully, everybody should get a chance to share their views, and sometimes if we don't want someone to share those views, we kind of turn up the volume, and that decreases the civility in the room, and really decreases what we're going to be able to accomplish if we're not being respectful. So the goal is to create a culture in which people feel comfortable and feel respected and feel safe, so that they can share their ideas, and we can do what's best for the citizens, maybe avoid debates or interruptions of other people listening, instead of being an aggressive listener, we're waiting, and I'm talking to me here too, we're waiting to share our own opinions, and we're not hearing what people say, we're being aggressive listeners sometimes, that we need to be listening more than waiting for someone to finish, so we can share our ideas. One person should talk at a time. You got my question?
Thank you.
You got my question?
Yes.
Let's be respectful. We've been in situations where we weren't.
All right, is Mr. McGrath out there? Nope. All right, next item on the agenda is my report, I'm going to cover a couple of personal things first, yes, I did sell my house, I moved to an apartment on Main Street, I am not, I bought a house in Florida, but I'm not moving to Florida, I am staying here, and I'm going to finish out my term and run again for another term, so we can stop all those rumors that people are saying that I have sold my house and I'm leaving town, I'm not leaving. Next one is I've got to have a neck surgery on June 18th, the neck surgery I had last time did not take, so they have to go in through the back and do another surgery. Then coming back from that on June 16th, I have to have skin cancer surgery on my notes, so I've got a busy couple of months coming up, but.
Do you think July?
July, yeah, July, July 16th, not, did I say June? July 16th, but I'll be available, I will not be, I mean, I may be out of pocket, but I'll still be here to answer questions, my phone will still be on, and I'll still do the job as the mayor of the town, but I just want everybody to know that if they need me, call me on my phone, and we'll make everything happen the same way it is before. Any questions on any of that? All right, first thing is want to update the industrial drive and Spring Street courts, those courts are probably about 75% done, all we're waiting on now is the curing time for the concrete and the asphalt, so they can put the coating on, put the baskets up, and put the fence up. If you haven't looked at it, y'all go look at it, those are going to be some really nice looking courts when we get done. And on the updating, the existing location for the building, the City Hall or the Police Administration Building, we have a meeting scheduled for June 13th at 7:15 a.m. with an architect and the engineer, to see what we can do with either this building, either remodeling it, tearing it down, rebuilding it, or whatever we can fit, whatever we hear, and at that time, we're waiting on an update on the electrical quote, and the update on demolition for the mitigation of demolition, they're supposed to have those, I don't have anything at this time, they're supposed to be working on that for me. The hazardous material inspection, did y'all receive that? Did y'all read over it? Okay. And at that time, another thing I want to tell you is today, our guys finished the concrete of the pool, they did a big section of it, if we would have contracted it out, it'd been about $7,600, we did it for $3,300, so we saved the city about $4,000 today. The pool will open Saturday, January, oh, January 8th, phew, June 8th. Now, there is, there is one aspect of the pool that didn't get finished that we will finish in the fall, it's the rope anchors for the swim lane, you have to have an electrician do that, which is new to me, because they have to be grounded, so we're going to do some temporary swim lane application this year, then in the fall, we're going to go ahead and put the regular anchors in for the swim lane. And as Scott said, as far as the purchase of the grapple truck, we actually submitted that to FEMA for reimbursement under the Federal Emergency Management, along with all the loads of brush that we sent, so we may get reimbursed completely for all that.
Wonderful.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Yeah, dude, now, you talked about bringing in an architect to look at our situation here, do we know how much that's going to cost?
No idea. They don't, until, until they tell us that this is what I'm going to design, I mean, it's whatever it costs, I mean, Scott, can you give a rough estimate?
Thursday's meeting is a question and answer.
Yes.
Let's see, what are the realistic proposals?
That we can do.
For the use of 314 Spring Street, and from there, then we'll have cost.
And then we'll come to y'all and say, hey, do you want to do this, or what do you want to do? Any other questions?
The update on hazardous material, is that something that would be available to citizens if they were curious about that?
Yes, there's public record, yeah.
Since we've talked a lot about that, it would be available to anyone else that wanted to see.
No, we probably would do an electronic copy, we won't do a.
Sure.
Paper copy, because it's, it's about that thick, so.
Yes, I know.
There's, there's a lot of stuff in there.
There's a lot to read.
I will admit, I did not read 115 pages, but I did read what, read what their findings were.
Basically what it amounts to, and I'll just say it is, is no matter what we do, we've got to mitigate, we remodel, we got to mitigate, we tear it down, we got to mitigate, that's basically what that's saying.
For safety purposes.
Well, and also, it's, it also has the thing in there about the hazards of people working in the building with this, certain things that are in here, so we have to, like I said, we'll have a better understanding next Thursday.
Okay.
So.
Well, next Thursday's meeting, will every people here, they can answer some questions based off of that report as well?
No, those people are not coming to that.
That's not.
They're not coming to that meeting, yeah, I have, we got, what we're trying to do is get the, y'all the quotes on what it's going to cost, or do everything, and then we'll bring them in and say, well, if you don't do this, this is what's going to, you know what I mean, they'll, they'll let us know then. We're not going to spend any money until we can bring them back to y'all to say, these are the options that we have for this particular location. All right, next item on the agenda is department and committee reports, I think Derek's got a report that he wants to go over.
Oh, here, we'll get back here. He did bring up Hull, Hull Avenue project a little bit ago, we are going to do that in-house, so that'll be 730 foot of waterline that we'll be replacing in-house. Contractor price on that would be roughly $168,000, we bought the material, and I think we can do it for around $45,000, so hopefully saving the city about $120,000 on that one particular project. I expect it may be take around three to four weeks, we've never done it, we have the knowledge to do it, so we're going to take that on and get that done. Another thing, I might get Scott to help me a little bit with this, is every business around town pretty much has a, what we call a fire line, or a fire suppression system, meaning they have sprinklers in their building, or, or whatever, we have found out that these fire lines are not metered, and we have been losing a lot of water and revenue over the years. I had a guy come in today, and we went around and checked four locations, three of the four had leaks on them, one in particular was leaking 15 gallons per minute, and that equals to about 648,000 gallons of water per month that we're losing revenue on. So me and Scott and the mayor, we're going to work with the attorney and maybe draw up some kind of letter to, to get these systems metered, so we can start charging for that revenue, and put that burden on the business owners and not on the citizens of the town. Just want to let y'all know on that, again, three of the four was leaking, and, and I just kind of crunched some quick numbers, me and Cindy, and it was around $8,000 just on, on those three businesses.
Per month?
Per month. And we have a total of 22 to 23 businesses that have fire lines, so there's really no telling what that number is, but we do need to get a hold of it, because that is lost revenue and lost income. It also hurts us on our report that we submit to the state as far as water loss per year. We're going to get, get a dang plan together, and we'll probably be coming, coming to y'all and submit that plan and go, and just kind of keep you in the loop on it.
Chief Davis, you want to do your report?
Yeah, absolutely. All right, so guys, so I was, I asked if I would come up here and explain third and main traffic light, and some people have some questions as to why it is what it is, essentially, and so I'll do the best I can, you know, first and foremost is, traffic lights are put there to control traffic, obviously, and safety, it's a safety thing, okay? When you guys decided to repay Main Street, look, what we did up there, we made the parking better, took out the turning lane, you really limit what you can and can't do up there, okay? So what we have settled on is the safest, safest thing, which is alternating traffic northbound, southbound on Main Street. We did, with the assist of Stansel who helps us, we did try multiple ways to limit either adding time or taking away time, what we've found right now is the time that is set currently is pretty much the best option as of right now, okay? I did have somebody else ask me, well, can you, can you make it to where they can't turn left? Not really, reason being is, there's a lot of commercial traffic, guys, you've got to think about it, besides McDonald's traffic light and Walmart, that's our pretty much next biggest intersection, there's a lot of commercial traffic that actually flows down Third Avenue either way, a lot of semi trucks and stuff, if you take away a left turn right there, you're going to have a lot of semi trucks and other trucks trying to turn in other roads, which are not nowhere near as wide, you're going to have traffic backups, you're going to have issues, usually if we ever have that happen, usually it's up there around Fight Avenue or College, and then we have to block traffic, we have to get up there with multiple units, get them to back out, it's a pain. So there's really, the reason why we've done what we've done, safety, number one, you can't leave it on flash all the time, that's a safety concern, you know, you'll have wrecks because of that, because it's hard to see if you're on Third Avenue, and you want to try to pull out on Main Street, it's hard to see, so the reason we did what we did is that, we're limited on options because the turn lane's taken out, and because we'll make it safe, so that's the reason why we've done what we've done. The second thing I was asked to talk about is, is the Police Administration Building and City Hall, and I just want to say, first off, thank you guys so much for what y'all have done so far on this project, I think everybody knows that it's long overdue, that the Police Department and City Hall needs to be updated and/or added to, and/or build a brand new. Now, that's a hard topic, I understand that, you guys have a very difficult, difficult subject to deal with, trying to find what's best to accomplish this.
Or what's available.
Or what's available. I, I understand, I have no issues with if y'all thought that down there on Upper Frey Road was good, or if you thought it was bad, I get it, it's a hard topic, I think the main thing we have to understand moving forward is, is we have to keep working at this goal to accomplish this goal in some way, shape, or form, and what that option is and how we get there, I don't know, all I know is, is we just have to make sure moving forward, that we keep going at it, and don't leave it back on the back burner and just kind of forget about it, just because one or two things didn't work out for us, you know, we can look back five years ago and be like, we missed this opportunity, we missed this opportunity, we missed, look, we can't keep pushing down the road, we're going to have to do something sooner or later, and so, I, I know it's a hard subject to deal with, but I appreciate everything y'all have done so far, and I just want to make sure we keep moving towards that goal, if y'all don't care, and just, if y'all ever need anything from us, let us know, if you have any questions about the Police Department, be glad to answer them for you, I'm always here to help y'all if I can, and Mayor, if you don't care, one more thing I want to say, we had the storm just come through a few weeks ago, we were very fortunate that we didn't have any injuries in town, I just want to say thank you to the mayor, thank you to the Street Department for coming out, thank you for all the officers and dispatchers, we had extra officers come in, dispatchers come in to help, we actually worked together as a team really good, accomplished it, we were able to come in, try to clear these streets as best we could, Street Department did an excellent job, they helped us, we were able to get all this information to upper Cumberland, so they can come in, so they can start doing their job, and it worked out really good, I appreciate my department all the time anyways, and they all know that, but anyways, I just want to say thank you to everybody who actually helped, that was a, it was, it was a difficult night, but it worked out really good, and I think the outcome was good, and I've had a bunch of people reach out to us and say, y'all did an excellent job, appreciate y'all very much, I want y'all to be aware of that.
Well, thank you, because you're a big part of that also.
Well, we try, but I just want everybody to know, and it worked out really good that night, as far as what it was, it couldn't want any better, I don't think.
Chief, I just want to make sure that everybody understands, when you talk about ability issues and stuff, you guys are under a lot of state, federal, and legal obligations.
Yes, sir.
When it comes to that.
Yes, sir.
And you guys need the type of facilities that can provide that.
Yes, sir.
When it comes to computer systems, technology, evidence.
Yeah.
There's a lot of things that can be.
Case files.
Exactly, you guys are handcuffed.
Yeah.
Because of a lot of that, and so we need to.
And it's long overdue, I think everybody knows.
Exactly, and you guys need to have that type of facility to handle that.
And I know everybody down here understands that, and I know everybody's on board with it, I know it's just a, it's a hard subject, I just want to make sure we keep moving towards that goal, that's the main thing, so, and I'll help y'all any way I can, if y'all have any questions for me, just let me know, and I'll be glad to do anything I can, so.
Thank you, Chief. Now, it's Scott, your report, please.
Okay, you have a written report there that speaks to the cash and everything that we have on hand, just for the public's purposes, as you add a general fund, we have $5,257,755. The street aid fund, $193,208, that was May 31st. Water sewer fund, we have $2,406,645 in cash. For the water sewer fund debt, we have $1,713,987 of debt. The annualized water sewer fund operating profit at this point in time is $136,495, I expect that to be down, and just remember, I expect this year, when we get the audit report, the pension adjustment, because if the markets were down, it's always one year behind, that'll come down again, okay? And I will reiterate, we're not looking for any increases this year, but it will be something that needs to be considered every year, particularly if we hit the, start putting in the streets, which I think is going to bust loose really soon, okay? Just got to get through the, your credit. Oops, all's not in our court, it's in, it's in the state's.
Actually, it's, actually, it's been approved by the state, it's been approved by the engineer, we're waiting on an accounting firm to approve it.
Okay, don't put down an accountant, yes, I agree with you.
But I mean, that's what we're waiting on.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, town's in good shape there. I did want to bring, put you a new report in there, page 19, ask you to look at that. Now, I want to explain it to you, folks, I understand, there's no way you can look at this 25-page report the night that you get it and have any intelligent questions, but when you take it home and you look at it, by all means, if you've got questions, come back and ask, please. Okay, this is a, an analysis of the loans that we fully anticipate to get, okay? It reflects everything in the water sewer fund, and I'll just kind of break it out into sections, so that you know, so you can speak intelligently to the public. I'll just do the first one for you, okay? Total drinking line, estimated project cost, okay? It's page, page 19 in my report. Not in the budget, but in the budget.
I thought I could have found it.
There you go. Over drinking line, estimated project cost, okay? Back into this, because this will be all we can fund with loans, unless we start to get other federal and state grants, okay? This will be as much as we can do on drinking lines, it's $4.5 billion, okay? With the SRF that we have in place, that we haven't got the final letter on, because state has, they're behind on this, we're going to be able to get forgiven on drinking water, $1,260,000.
Hold on a second.
Yep.
If we're going to have conversations, can we please step outside, so you don't interrupt the meeting, please?
Okay, the.
Can you repeat that, Scott?
Yeah.
How much of this?
The drinking water loan forgiveness, okay, will be $1,260,000, okay? All along, though, we always have to come up with the money first, okay, and then, then it gets forgiven, okay? So cash flow, water sewer fund, we start doing these water lines, is always going to be a concern, make sure we get enough money in the bank account to pay the contractors, and then there's a, I'm expecting a two to three month at least delay before we get reimbursed for any monies that we are going to go through SRF loans, because they're way behind now. But if you look at that drinking water, water, the loan indebtedness, when it's done, okay, for all that we can do, we'll book $1,260,000 as additional debt, okay? So the big thing here, and I put it in orange for you, the total drinking water minimum cash to be sourced by Carthage's Reserve. cash to be sourced by Carthage's reserves just for the drinking water is $1,222,227, okay? So if you do the same for the clean water, that's your sewer lines, okay? Then you got the bank stabilization, which will be in 2025, the summer. And the thing to think about that is, I'm going to recommend that we go through the Tennessee Municipal League to fund our portion of that. Our contract with South Carthage expires in July, and that's being renegotiated at the present time, but it's not going to be an unlimited thing on capital assets. But it's still being negotiated. So I'm anticipating that our share of that will be $864,150,000, okay? The next item down is the summarization of everything for the water sewer fund in the next one, two, three, four years out, okay? The total that we can afford to spend with the resources that we're, we have is $10,351,715. Of that, we'll wind up having, once we get done with the SRFs that we have now, we'll have added an additional $4,284,150 to our loans. We already have 1.7, okay? You add those together, you're going to find that it comes up to be $7,500,000, which is all we can afford. That's all we can make the payments on, okay? Mathematical equation. Okay? So, then I've kind of worked that out, and I have a whole schedule for each of these of exactly what it's going to require, cash, trying to anticipate cash flow wise. The bottom line of it, that you need to be aware of when you talk about a percentage increase next year, '25, '26, and subsequent years, is the cash that's required to do the drinking and water lines that we've got to come up with is $1,897,227, okay? So we have $2.4 million in the bank right now. I want to keep a million dollars in the operating account to make sure we're always on payroll in emergencies and so forth. So I'm just trying to lay the foundation so that you understand what we're looking at to get water lines and drinking lines done through the next three to four years. At the end of that three to four years, unless the state does something different for us, unless the federal government does something for us, that's all we're going to be able to afford. We can't borrow anymore because we can't make the payments on. Okay? Now, all along, your operating costs are continuing to go up. So just keep all that in mind as you're thinking about things. I think Daniel mailed out this sheet about the budget revision for this year. No appropriation increase, just shifted from differing within the same fund, within the general fund, monies that we did not spend on the Police and Administration Building. We shifted monies towards parks, just rearranged the salaries for administrative assistant from the mayor's budget to the Finance Administration to better reflect where she works now, okay? So any questions you have on that, let me know. No new appropriations that we, that we asked for. Okay. Call your attention to this page. This is the, my report, okay? 25-page report. I want you to look at the item number three, purchasing policy, council clarification for checks over $10,000, okay? I need to know and hear from you what exactly you want to look at. At one point in time, in my opinion, the town was hamstrung because that figure was $2,000, and the council was to look at every check, or every invoice that's $2,000. Department heads couldn't really get the job done. The prior administration recognized that, made this come through, and it's gone to $10,000. But there's still some ambiguity about what you folks want to see. So what I want to do is, in 2022, it was permitted that we could move our bid limit up to $25,000 over $10,000, okay? If we had a full-time purchasing agent, we could move that bid limit up to $50,000. We don't have a full-time purchasing agent, and I don't think we're ever going to have one unless we acquire another 300 acres of land somewhere to expand the town of Carthage, okay? So, having said that, I recommend that we increase the amount that we're looking to bid up to $25,000, and we adjust our purchasing policy, and we adjust the ordinance that we did along with that purchasing policy to reflect that Tennessee Code annotated allows us to go up to $25,000. And I would recommend, if you still want to review the checks, I can give you every one of them, okay? I just don't think that's the most efficient use of your time. But I'll do what you want to move that limit for any checks over $25,000. We will have to modify the purchasing policy and ordinance that we have done. So, and while I'm on that, we got our escrow check back for the land possible purchase, okay? So, in full. So, questions of me, you don't have to make a decision tonight, I just want you to think about it. And if you want to do it tonight, fine, we can begin with Andre getting it written up. I need to know that council approval report with our new system, I'm already having it designed, so it'll kick out $10,000 and more every month, okay? But we're, you can't hardly get anything that we need to for $10,000.
My first thought is definitely those things that are monthly, recurring, and over $10,000. It definitely makes sense to.
Agreed. If we voted it in, then we do it.
Definitely the recurring.
Well, what I want to do, if you want me to, is I'm going to spell that out very clearly, which ones don't need to come before the council, okay? And there won't be any doubt, ambiguity about it, okay? That part, I understand. It, it'll be the GNC supply behind the water lines and stuff like that, the one that I showed you, those $24,000. It's already been approved in the budget.
As an emergency?
But I'm not certain. I picked up.
As an emergency?
Huh?
Are you saying it's?
If it's an emergency, the law's clear what the mayor can do. Okay? But what I'm talking about is just routine things that are already approved in the budget. How closely are you wanting to monitor movement of money? Okay, that's coming out. You want to see. Is $25,000 low enough, high enough? But I want to write that policy so that my successor, there is no ambiguity that they have to deal with, okay? Not my successor. My goal is to make everything as clean as possible when I depart, and I will fulfill the reason I came to the town in the first place.
You said TCA Code. The TCA Code allows that, correct?
Yes. I have that in my green folder right over there.
And let me add something. What it, what it's saying is if we, if we budget, let's say we budget $250,000 for the parks, and we want to do a fence project and it costs $15,000, you've already allowed us to spend the money, but we have to wait to get in front of y'all to spend the $15,000 because this is $10,000 now. So basically, if it's in the budget and you've already agreed to spend that money, we're wanting to go up to 25 so we can move projects along faster. And make, make sure the bills are paid on time and stuff like that.
As long as it's something we've already budgeted, I don't see any problem with going ahead and doing it. I think we've already done it.
Right.
I agree.
Well, that, that's where the ambiguity comes in because purchasing policy, once again, I didn't write the entire purchasing policy. I took MTS and I adapted it to the town of Carthage, okay? And that was one of our uniquenesses. And then the ordinance was done, but as I interpreted it, okay, yes, it has been approved by the council already, but I think the intent was, we want to see any invoice that's $10,000 or more before we, before it gets paid. And if we do that, there will be invoices that will be late. That's, it's not okay with me, but if it's okay, if that's what the council wants to do, that's what we'll do. So.
Basically, we're asking for permission to move that $10,000 mark up to $25,000.
So, did you make a motion on that?
I've just been listening mostly.
And we can do it when we get down into the.
Well, questions of me, do you understand what I'm trying, what I'm asking you?
Yes.
If you want to see every check, I can make it happen, but we, we're hamstring, we can't get nothing done, okay?
We're not here to micromanage this situation. It's, you know, if it's things that have been budgeted and it's, you know, for a particular item, I don't say that we need to vote on paying X amount of dollars within the budget.
Understand, but I got more concerned about it when the escrow payment came up. I said, well, they approved $1.5 million for us to support this new building, but yet I felt like, okay, I might have dropped the ball there, Sam. So that's why I said, okay, I want to make clear up any ambiguity about this and make sure, so that my successor, whomever that might be, they don't have to deal with it. I've dealt with it, and we've got it nailed down.
Well, even on the building, though, we were informed. We were definitely informed every step of the way as to what was happening, so there wasn't anything that we weren't aware of.
I tried to make sure you had more than you could ever digest, but.
Yeah, we're not going to keep anything from y'all. There's no way to, no reason to do that.
So, if you want me to put together the information from the state and show you, okay, this is where it says we can do this for $25,000, I'll do that. I have it. It's a simple matter to do. But that would be my recommendation under the President and climate, and we'll clearly state in the purchasing policy, if that's what you want, hey, if it's been approved in the budget ordinance, all we want to see is invoices over $25,000, unless it's going to cause it to be late, and then we won't see it after, after the fact, okay? I won't be that specific about it so there is no doubt what we're trying to do and make sure everybody's advised on.
Well, I think Steve did an excellent job on the boom truck.
Yes.
To at least call us and get the opinion, you know, there's going to be times when emergencies come up, but we, it, it's, it, I think we need to be called on it anyway and get a consensus on it, and you did.
That's what I'm going to do. I mean, it's, we're, we're a team here. We're not, it's not one person.
Well, I'm going to go ahead, put it together, leaving the draft, send it to Andre for him to look over, and then we'll look at it next board meeting, if that's okay with the mayor.
Yes.
He sets the agenda. Questions of me before we get to the ordinance. That's a separate thing. I get it. Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. First item on the agenda is a second reading of ordinance B 202-405-02-2. That's the budget for fiscal year '24, '25. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. Any discussion?
Okay. There was a question, Sam asked whether there are any changes to the first reading. And I just want to make some observations and highlight a few things for you. So in total, this budget is $9.5 million, okay? In the first reading, there were two no votes. That may not bother y'all, but it bothers me because I wonder, okay, what's all there? And best I can gather, three one-thousandths of an issue costs maybe two no votes, okay? When you make a no vote, that says, I don't approve of this budget. And so, I would recommend, if there's a section that you have philosophical strength or feelings about, you can make that very public, but I'm not sure it's the wisest thing to, to discontinue a whole budget just because of a minute part of the whole budget. I would just like to hear that, hey, we're agreed with everything except for this line item, and I'm voting with restraint or whatever with that objection, okay? So the next thing is, changes, this is not a change. I'm highlighting it because I want to make sure of something. In this budget, since February, we've had, that we're hiring a new cashier. So you have the detailed wage study, and it has everybody's recommended payments or salaries for the year. So we're looking to post that job for a new cashier because if the Lord allows me to live long enough, December of 2025, I'm looking to retire and do some other things. The reason I came to the town of Carthage is because I was contracted before, and I saw that I could help the town of Carthage, and it was just so happened the right time in my life, I had to back surgery, that I wanted to help. As soon as we get this system in place, we got the person in place, I want to make sure that she is trained because Cindy Gladwell is my recommendation. And I wanted you to have some facts about that. Not only do I believe in her, but when we hire the cashier, she'll spend time helping train the new cashier. But it's becoming an issue to find CPAs. And I know that's been mentioned, where we want a CPA. I came because I wanted help, okay? I spent my entire life in service to people and to this community. I'm not necessarily to this community, but communities in Tennessee and Kentucky. But I just want to share some things with you, for you, because I don't want her hurting anything, and this come down 18 months from now, and we've been training for it, and she doesn't, she's not considered, she'd be promoted from within. That won't be my decision, that'll be y'all's decision, but I, I do have an opportunity to speak to it. This is, "State and local public finance officers face talent shortfall according to the GF, oh wait, that's Government Finance Officers Association. Inability to file, to fill open positions. There is a demand for state and local public finance workers far outstripping the supply. Thirty thousand fewer state and local public finance workers in September of '22 than in 2019. Job boards are filling up often with zero applicants who meet the minimum requirements." Cindy is not a CPA. Don't think she can get pulled off by the time in 18 months either. Don't know that she wants to be, but she will have the capacity to fulfill the job. But what you might want to consider is at that time to outsource certain functions. You know, Cindy doesn't have an accounting degree, can't expect her to have 30 years of accounting experience, so you might want to outsource to a CPA firm or someone to help her do monthly financials. You're into financials for sure, and, you know, forecasting, budget, something like that, that she doesn't have the breadth of experience, and in time she will have. So I'm giving you plenty of notice and transparency to think about it, but that cashier, if you tell me, no, we're not going to hire the cashier, that stops that plan, okay? So that's in the budget. Next thing, Stephen Wills in the Clean Water Department Sewer Plant passed his collection two. Collection two examination, and so, in the budget, Steve recommended that we move him to a C7 Step 3, so the budget, the second reading does reflect that. Next item, clarifications for 51C3 and 51C6 organizations. Technically, you could wait till June 30th of 2025 to tell me how you want that money dispersed, but I sure wish you wouldn't do that, okay? So whatever you got to do to figure out how you want to allocate that, I need some guidance, okay?
But we have time to do that. We don't have to spend money tonight. We can pass the budget and not.
That's correct. I'm not going to spend it till I know who to send. I have one line item that says 51C3, 51C6. How you tell me to allocate it, that's what we'll do later on. Removal of the grapple hook. We had already budgeted that for the FY '24, '25. twenty-five. Mayor made a executive decision, I agreed with it, and I think that, uh, the public's agreed with it, and what I heard from the council and everybody, it was a good decision. It's a lot of money, but we'd already budgeted and for the next fiscal year, but it is not, it's been taken off of FY twenty-four, twenty-five, we've already spent that money. So, we had a first and a second, so, Mayor, I'm here for questions, do you have any questions?
Any questions?
The, the hiring of the cashier in July, I guess she's gonna have eighteen months of on-the-job training?
No.
No?
He or she will have.
Well, I mean, I, that's, he's recommended, is her right?
No, no, that's CFO, that's CFO job.
CFO job, okay, so if you're.
She's already a certified municipal finance officer, okay? So, we got all that in place.
But is it, like, when she steps up, she's gonna shadow you for eighteen months? That's why I guess I'm asking.
Probably will be fourteen months, or we'll see the new person if they pick up the job, 'cause that's not the easiest job.
No.
You don't have no money for me to be the cashier, I can tell you.
She puts up with me, I mean.
But, uh, what I, what we're looking to do is, I wanna give her the benefit of everything I can give to her, okay?
That's a position that we want fully trained when we step into it, because we've been caught before with our pants down and not had one, and Scott come in and fix it a couple of times. And I think if we transition, and she trains, it'll be a smooth transition, we will not even have a hiccup.
Like, the last six months of my tenure here, she's gonna give this report, okay? So, I'm gonna make sure she's as trained within her capacities and background and education with this, say she's not a CPA, doesn't have thirty years of accounting experience, you can't expect that, okay?
So, are we voting to not to accept applications for a cashier?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You'd like to see that filled in July, is that what you're saying?
Uh, my, my plan is, uh, to begin to publish it, uh, in June, with, like, June twenty-sixth, I think, is the date of, um, final submission, and then in, uh, July, we're gonna evaluate. Each candidate that comes in, we'll meet with the panel of myself, Cindy and Julie. Uh, we are developing tests so that I know they know how to use Microsoft Excel, that they know how to use, uh, Microsoft Edge, Microsoft Word. We don't need to be training somebody to do those basic skills. We're looking for somebody that's got banking, uh, or cashier experience, if they're out there. The right person, though, if they're clay that's moldable and able to demonstrate those things, if there's somebody I feel like we can train, um, you know, we're gonna get the best person. And if I don't get the right person, I won't be hired. Of course, you guys do the hiring, I won't, I guess I should say, I won't be making any recommendations, okay? But, um, we'll just keep trying till we get the right person.
But I mean, way, way back, you're not gonna retire till twenty twenty-five.
The Lord allows me to live, none of us know what tomorrow holds.
That's exactly true.
But that's the tentative plan, okay? Uh, my little honey and I are gonna do some.
Trick.
Just for record, that is my wife, Kino, is my.
Hey, Sam, to answer your question, you're, you're voting to approve the budget, which is in the budget, which means he would be approved to hire.
Yes, sir.
We're not just getting to applications, this is we're approving.
On top of that, I mean, if it's in the budget, we still get to talk to the people that.
Yeah.
Okay. We're all good on that.
No, but we haven't changed our hiring policy.
Okay, I think we're all good on it, Dave.
My big thing is, so you understand, I'm gonna start training her once we got the cashier going, she's gonna start doing a lot of stuff, okay? Um, but she'll be pulled in a lot of directions, because they'll tell you, I, hopefully I'm tactful about it, but I, I'm kind of a demanding person, I want it right, okay? Um, but she's gonna be her own person. What I don't want to happen is in this, October or November of twenty twenty-five, the council will come back and say, well, no, we're gonna go another direction. I will have already told you if it ain't gonna work out, okay? There won't be no doubt, and I won't, if it's not working out, she'll tell me first, and then I, I will tell you as well. But that's our plan, I just didn't want any surprises, 'cause I don't want her hurt and us going down the route and working for something. Uh, we've already worked out all the mechanics internally, the finance administration staff. Uh, so, that's kind of the plan, I will, I just wanna, if you approve this budget, I'm gonna move forward with the cashier, if that's what is approved.
All right, thank you, Scott. All right, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gray.
Yes.
Councilman McGray.
Yes.
Councilman McNappel.
Yes.
Councilman Petty.
Yes.
Councilman Moore.
Yes.
Any no votes? No. Budget passes. Okay, now we're on the new business. The first one we're on the agenda is discussion of in-house Hull Avenue waterline replacement. Derek already went over that. They have got a new rule out. Before, it used to be we could only do a thousand feet a month. TDEC has said, as long as we have an engineer, we can do as many feet as we can do in a month. So, we're gonna start moving on bigger and bigger projects to save more and more money, so we can accomplish more with our water and sewer lines. That's, that's all that was on there for. Item number two on new business is Smith County High School ball field lights. I was asked to put this on the agenda so we could discuss it, they're asking, uh, the high schools wanting to put ball field lights up, and.
It's both baseball and softball?
I was just told baseball, I'm sure it'll be both, but I don't know. But that's, that's something I want y'all to either think about or talk to your constituents about, and see if, they said there was some sort of ordinance or some sort of rules that they couldn't, we have not found one.
I questioned that with, uh, I guess, I'm sorry, actually, with Randy Workfield, who was involved in depth when they did the thing, because the word was out that they would never put lights up, and he said absolutely that was not the case. So, as much as I wish they didn't do it, I, I don't think we have the right to say no.
Well, Sam, there's nothing, we have no ordinances, we have nothing against it, is what I'm saying.
Exactly.
So, I mean, we can't, I mean, it's their property.
Yeah.
So, I just wanna give you a heads up, this'll come out there, if your constituents have questions, just let them know, get ahold of the school board or whoever they need to get ahold of, it's not a Carthage City project.
Right.
Okay?
So, we don't need to have a public hearing to hear from neighbors to the.
I mean, if, if you want, it's not our project, um, but if we can have one, I don't mind.
Well, we're just being proactive.
But if we do that, and public comes out against it, do we have any strength to do it?
I mean, what, what are we gonna do if they say no?
Yeah. I mean, I, I.
Are we gonna pass an ordinance that says there'll be no ball field lights in the city of Carthage?
Well, we, and then again, we go back to, we replace lights at the city park.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's just, it's.
But I think it's the right thing to do to let the public.
That's what I'm saying, let them know, make them aware of it, because I'm sure the school board is, they've already asked for the money, so I'm sure it'll get out there. I just want them to make you and the public aware that this is coming up. So, if they have a problem with it, they need to get with the school board and say, hey, we do not want this.
Well, I mean, at the very least, require, have, the lights have certain parameters, um.
We did, we did some very directional lights at city park, and I think we do owe it to the citizens to at least request that be done there.
With the new ball field lights, I've looked at it, they, they have the directional lights now, there's not as much overbleed as it used to be, they're more of a LED-type light that focuses on certain portions of the field, because they have to have so many lumens per square foot, per, per position, so it's not as much overbleed as it used to be. But I mean, like I said, that's up to, I just wanna let y'all aware of what's going on, that way you, people start questioning, say, no, the Carthage City is not doing this, this is the school board.
It's my understanding.
I don't recall there being a vote or anything, any paperwork, but I do recall a lot of talk that we will not be putting up lights, but that's all I have.
That's just talk. Like, we're talking, that's just talk.
So, they would just need to go to the school board.
School board is who they have to go through, 'cause it's their property, um, there's nothing that prevents it from being put in, is what I'm saying.
For what it's worth, I was told that, uh, there's a lot of private donations to do this.
Yeah, it's definitely coming from the private sector.
Yeah.
And not only that, I hate to say this, but it could benefit the town, because when they have the, the games at night or tournaments, they're gonna have to eat the restaurants and have to, they're gonna be downtown, so.
But it's also gonna be a night in the park.
That's what I was gonna say.
But it's already that.
Yeah, well, it's not, no matter what time of day it is, it's gonna be a night in the park.
That's just, it's gonna be a lot more, a lot more games.
Okay, the last item on the agenda is our July council meeting. Our July council meeting falls on Fourth of July. Would people like to change that, or y'all wanna be here on Fourth of July?
I don't care.
I make a motion to change it. Do you want to go to the next?
Uh, the thirteenth of July?
The thirteenth of July.
That's the next Thursday?
I'll make that motion.
Sam, C eleven?
The eleventh, what is it?
Fourth of July on Thursday.
The eleventh.
I don't have my phone. I think, I got so many dates on my head about surgeries and everything, I don't.
Last I checked, four, seven is eleven.
Well, you misled me, I did not say the date, I was following him.
Today, eleven.
No, next Thursday, next Thursday's the thirteenth, June thirteenth.
I'll make the motion to remove.
Yeah, I'm gonna do it.
Okay.
I already made my.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'll say it.
So, I will amend mine to be the eleventh.
Okay.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Good me-